This meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:50 PM, Tuesday, June 21, 2016, in Room 137, the Addison Building. President at the Board Table is Ms. Brenda Lewis, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Hines?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Ms. Selinger?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
It is my pleasure to introduce Hura Abadi, one of our John Adams Middle School students, to come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item is approval agenda. Ms. Lewis?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Second, any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Items three, announcements and communications, American Indian Programming Update. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I would like to call up Guthrie Capacella, our Native American liaison, Mr. Tucker Keaton, Ms. Betty Smith, and Ms. Shirley Griesing. Please come on up, and they are going to update us on the American Indian Program. If you recall, in the fall, we came in front of you and talked about the revenue that we were receiving from the Minnesota Department of Education, and talked about the planning and what we were planning to do for this year, and I told you at that time, we'll come back to you in the spring and update you, and I am thrilled now with the work, and we have several stakeholders here who are going to celebrate that work and talk with you about where we are and next steps.
Sorry, one moment.
That's fine. I'm just airplaneing this to Guthrie.
Can this work in? I want to thank Betty and Shirley and Tucker for coming and supporting me this evening, and it's not just to support me, but in support of the program. My name is Guthrie Capacella. I'm the American Indian Liaison for the school district. I'm also Honk Pappalakota, enrolled in Standing Rock Sioux Tribe in North Dakota. Before I go over our program update, just really want to give you a background of why I'm here, and really why this is important. And really, this isn't just a program update for students. You know, this is important for our parents and our family members from our native community, and really, although I work for all of you, I'm representative of all of them, so it's not just me. And I have this turned around. There we go. I can read my own name. This is really important for us to have a program which embraces our culture, and our history, and our identity, and not just talking about it in a past tense, but talking about it for the here and now, and for the future. You know, I know a lot of you here, and it's different seeing you in this capacity, but, you know, for me, my family's story is like a lot of other families. School was something that we all had relatives, whether it's aunts, uncles, mothers, fathers. For me, it was my grandmother, who was taken away and gone to an Indian boarding school. You know, I don't know if everyone knows details about Indian boarding schools, but at my grandmother's Indian boarding school, she was punished for speaking the only language that she ever knew, and subsequently, her children, her grandchildren, and her great-grandchildren no longer speak that language. And this is the history of our education system for our people, and so it's important that there is this opportunity for us to bring this back into education, and it's something that's unique to Native Americans, as it's granted to us through treaty rights, through multiple treaties over generations. And so I'm happy that I'm able to be a representative here for us in that effort. I have more to say, I'm getting lost. And so when I talk about, that is just my story, and when we talk about American Indians and Native Americans, we are diverse. There's four of us up here. We come from five different tribal nations. You know, we're diverse. There are, in Minnesota, there's 11 federally recognized tribal reservations. That is of the 567 federally recognized tribes. And why this is important is because here in Rochester, we have 161 Native American students, pre-K through 12, homeschool and public school, and they represent 39 different And I know this through outreach for cleaning up our records and registration, as it's been an underrepresented number within the district, and also through our title grant that we just received for the first time in roughly 20 years. And the records aren't complete yet. We're still, I have 60 more families that I need to talk to, and so we represent 39 tribal communities now, and that number's only to grow. And so on behalf of all of that, you know, I thank you for the opportunity to have me here. It's important for us to move forward in this way. And so now I'll actually talk about the work. You can see up on the screen what I've been doing, and what we've been working towards, and what our plans are next year. We're looking at higher ed goals for our high school students. We're looking at me being a district and building resource. This morning, I spent time with the three next to me with curriculum and development, working on recommendations for our K through five units. Next year, we're going to be in the classroom once a month with our Native American students at each site, working on Ojibwe and Dakota culture, which aligns with our MDE standards. And we're also going to be working on family and student engagement, both in school and out of school. Additionally to that, which isn't on here, you know, I've been instructed to be a cultural resource for our student support services. Within our 165 students, 161 students that we have, 35 of those are on IEPs, and so I'm going to work with student support services for the identified individuals that I've found, so that I can make sure that there's no cultural barriers or cultural communication that's not being met there, as well as just an extra communication for parents, as I have a child in an IEP, it gets a little hairy when you're trying to figure out what exactly they're saying sometimes, so a little extra clarification never hurt. What's going to help us be successful with this and beyond is our partnerships which we have in the community and throughout the state. I've been working on reaching out with other school districts which have more developed American Indian ed programs. I have some of the items here, I didn't want to pass them out before I spoke, because I figured you guys would just be looking at the books, and some of the other fun things. But in order to make cultural, cultural education relatable to our children in the schools, we need to make it culturally responsive, and we also need to make it visual, and I don't know what's the tactile, for our students to really grasp this. Part of our culture, thousands of years, culture, language, and so forth, was rooted in this. Being out of that, we need to reintroduce these things to our children, so that they can understand exactly what the meaning of some of it was. And so again, you know, for myself, for our parents, for the students, thank you for the opportunity in having us be here today and do this. I'll defer to the three here if they have anything to add to that. If not, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll pass around these as they start going.
I just want to say a quick thing. My mother grew up on the Spirit Lake Reservation in North Dakota, and she was never able to be happy and proud of who she was. And Betty and I, and our other little sister, grew up here in Rochester, and we went to the school district here all of our years, and we never learned anything about our people from our mother, because she went to the boarding school, and also, we never really learned anything from the Rochester Public Schools either, so we're just so delighted that you hired Guthrie, and that we can help in any way we can. And we're just asking for the true history to be told at the different grade levels, and we just feel like that'll really help the children to feel good about who they are. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I don't know if you guys know this, but the Dakota were exiled from Minnesota, and it's still on the books that we're supposed to not be here. And so that's a little bit ridiculous, I think, but, so I guess the main thing is to give the children a positive picture, and we've just been working at it for the last 15 years, learning our history after our mom died, and was so sad to be Native American at age 79. We decided to take the bull by the horns, and here we are.
I'd just like to reiterate what Guthrie said, that we have a special relationship as native people to the federal government and the state as well, and that includes those rights to education. And I feel like because of that special arrangement, we're fortunate that we can have someone like Guthrie work on our behalf, and that we can work as parents and members of the community to support him. As you probably know, I'm not originally from Minnesota, I'm from Oklahoma, and my two tribes, the Cherokee and Kiowa, are from Oklahoma. So I have some different kinds of experiences that I bring in, and while I'm not a voting member of the parent group, I am acting as a resource for the group. Also as a president of the REA, I have the opportunity to serve on some other state and national level American Indian committees, and so I'm looking for resources at both the state and the national level to bring back here and help our program. Overall, if you look back in history, and even look at the statistics today, we have one of the lowest graduation rates of any subgroup of students in the state, and that is not unusual in other states as well, but particularly in Minnesota, our graduation rates are very low. And so the kids that come to Rochester often come out of those reservations, and they need a place, a community, they feel safe and supported, and I hope that's what we can help Rochester Public Schools be to the kids that come here.
Board members, any questions?
Are you two sisters?
We are.
Oh, that's a wonderful.
I'm the big mean sister.
Oh, Ms. Selinger.
First of all, I would like to say Migwich, which is Ojibwe for thank you, I think, after 20 years have not taken Ojibwe, but I'm so thrilled that you're here to represent. I was glad to hear that Guthrie was here and hear about the work that he is doing, and it's great to see that even though you've gone through school and moved on, that you're coming back to help your community and help all of our communities, so I really appreciate that, and I wish you the best of luck going forward. Thank you.
All of our grandchildren are here.
Any else? Heather?
If there's no other questions, one thing I'd like to add, which I forgot to get out the first go around, is I believe that the work that we are doing with curriculum is vitally important. Part of the identity and part of our culture, if we hear conflicting messages at home in what's being taught at school, it adversely affects our children. And when the stories don't line up and the facts aren't in sequence, it really damages the identity of our kids. I had one example this year, when my son came home with a book, and it did just that. And at the end of the book, they get up and they dance around like Indians, and then they all sleep like little Indians. And I said to my son, I said, "We don't look like that. That doesn't look like us." And he said, "It's not a big deal, Dad. They're real Indians from in the past." And he's a first grader, and so just that quick, just those messages, just those things. We're in Rochester, there's 165 students. We don't have self-identity reinforcing itself like it would up in Red Lake. We're here from all over, and so the community does need to be built in the school, because that's where everybody is. So yeah, thank you again for the opportunity to do this. I think it is important work, and I think it will help with our graduation rates, and I think it will help our students succeed. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Lewis.
Item 3.2, candidate information. Ms. Lewis?
Yes. Earlier this month, Rochester Public Schools received notification from the Minnesota Secretary of State of a new law change regarding school board elections. However, upon further clarification, we were notified again by the Secretary of State Department that we were not subject to the law change. So in light of the special laws, 1969, Chapter 193, Section 3, our district is permitted to use an ALI system for at-large elections of the school board. So essentially, the way that we've been doing the elections will remain the same. We had a moment where the Secretary of State said the new law applied to us, and then upon further clarification, it doesn't, so we will remain the same, but wanted to make sure to get that clarification out.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Item four point, or four, consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to remove for individual consideration? I would like to remove 4.1, Human Resource Actions, to talk about a couple of things. Are there any other that board members would like to remove? If not, I entertain a motion to approve all but 4.1.
Make such a motion to approve.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes. 4.1, Human Resource Actions. Ms. Lewis, could you, we've had a number of people comment about the SAFE program, and it's in the budget, could you take a couple of moments and talk about how we're going to be serving the students in what, who are in the SAFE program going forward?
Sure. So our SAFE program is one of many programs that focuses on college and career readiness within our district. We are going to continue our focus surrounding college and career readiness, and actually increase that especially for our students that are experiencing the need for additional supports. We have current staff at our sites in collaboration with our equity specialists that will be continuing our work around these college and career readiness programs, especially for our at-risk youth. The mentoring programs and the other partnerships that we've heard about tonight regarding our college and career readiness will remain. In fact, last week, three members of the commission met with me to discuss this ongoing partnership and mentorship that they have, that we saw through the SAFE program. We will continue to have that exceptional mentorship program, we will just have it look a little bit different, but we are meeting the equity specialist and myself with Ben from the commission to discuss this further, what's working, and what can we do to really enhance that program. I wanted to take the time also to talk about our expanding programming with the county. Currently, we have the PACE program, Parents and Children Excel, and that has been for students aged seven to 14. It's a program through the county that really offers wraparound services and supports to ensure that our at-risk youth and families are really provided the necessary supports and services that they need in our schools and in the community to be successful. Homestead County, you might have saw this, and the Post Bulletin received a pretty large grant to have the PACE program extended all the way down into our preschool programming and preschool in the community. So that's an additional resource that we will have with the county. We also have educational assistance from the county that are actually housed in some of our schools that work directly with our students to ensure that they have access to services and supports. Our educational assistants also work to provide that, those supports from outside the school building, that really ensures that our students have quality attendance, that they have the supports and services that they need. We also are finishing up our first year of our Mental Health Collaborative, and that's been a partnership with Homestead County, where we have mental health supports that are directly in the schools, so our families are not having to make appointments outside the school day, and also that servicing is free to our students. I wanted to also talk about our expanding partnership with the United Way, our community schools partnership for both Riverside Engage, as well as funding the position for Riverside to strengthen our community schools partnership and models that we have. Also wanted to talk just briefly about our equity work, as we will have another update coming. During the 1617 school year, we added a principal on special assignment. He supports our staff and leadership in identifying our disparities and action steps and supports, so that we can eliminate those disparities. We also work to have Alpha Lobby, our principal on special assignment, for professional development for our staff on a formal and informal basis, so that could look like at staff meetings in a large group, or on a one-to-one basis. In April, we added our equity specialists, three of them. They're charged with the responsibility of working on community engagement, parent and family engagement, resources for our staff, heavy focus on college and career readiness. For example, how to fill out a FAFSA, how do you apply to colleges. We also are taking students on college visits with our district vans and our equity specialists, so that our students can understand what college looks like, feels like, have those visits, apply, get accepted, fill out the FAFSA. Last week, we had an evening for Latino families to understand and learn why that FAFSA is so important. You heard in depth tonight an update regarding Guthrie and his work with our American Indian programming. Probably the piece that you've heard me talk about the most, that I'm so very, very proud of with our equity work, is our community focus team. We will be coming back in July, in July or August meeting to talk to you about what are some of the strategies and suggestions that we have for our teachers and our staff to understand the trauma, and to have training on the historical trauma that our students are facing and have faced, and how it manifests. Also looking at, is our staff diverse? How can we recruit and retain more staff of color? Looking at our curriculum, is it relatable to our students of color? Is our athletic opportunities accessible to all kids? We are also looking at AP and honors classes. How are our students feeling about signing up for them? Where does that start? Our gifted programming. And then, of course, we've had a deep dive with our professional development with Great Lakes Equity, Envoy, Dr. Cruz, and Dr. Mohammed, and our Institute for Engaged Principles.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Do the board members have any questions? Like to ask?
I just have one comment. A number of us just got back from the University of Minnesota. We spent two days at an equity conference there, and I have to say, I really respect so many people in our community who are deeply concerned about our students who've been marginalized, and I just, I need you to know, we hear you, and I have never been more convinced that this district is committed to all of our kids, and I mean all of our kids. The message that came across loud and clear these last two days is that it's going to take every single staff person in this district to ensure that every single student gets what he or she needs. And I know we're doing staff development next fall in every building, helping all of our staff become more aware of all of our kids, their differences, and this is just me, but I am hoping that at some point, we won't need programs. We will have a culture in this district that is so focused on celebrating the differences that our students come in with, and making sure that none of them get left behind in any way, that it's just going to be a given, that we'll get so good at that, so focused on that. So I'm convinced, and I'm confident, that we're going to do better than we've ever done before.
Thank you. Any other?
I have a procedural question about 401. It leads with the resolution part of it that says, "School Board has approved appropriate budget staffing allocations. As some of these items are forward-looking, should it come after 705, when we approve the budget? Simply procedurally." Because if we do not approve the budget as stated, some of these may not follow directly. I defer to the clerk.
It can always be brought back as something different later, so no, if there's no problem with doing it this way.
Okay. Thanks for your continued education of me.
All right. Any other comments, questions? I'd just like to speak briefly. The board has received many, many emails supporting, or asking the board to consider not accepting the resignation of Mr. Arubay, president of, excuse me, principal of Fidel. I'd just like the public to know that there were some concerns raised about Mr. Arubay that required the district to conduct an investigation. We had an independent third party complete an investigation in response to those concerns, and after that was completed, Mr. Arubay voluntarily resigned his position from the district. So when we take action here in a few moments, I guess on behalf of the board, you know, I would want to wish Mr. Arubay well in any of his future endeavors. But with that explanation, I would ask, entertain a motion to approve the two items we just discussed.
With the stipulation Wendy taught me about, so move.
All right. So move, by Ms. O'Neil?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to item seven already, Effective, Efficient and Effective Operation, Vision B, Card B, Partnership, this information item. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I would like to call up Amy Ike, Executive Director of Community Education, and Julie Ruzick, Family and Community Liaison.
I'm going to do it right this time. Well, good evening, board members. Assistant Superintendent Lewis, Ms. Edgar, we are pleased to be with you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about the vision card that Julie and I have been tracking. We both feel this is critical work, the building of partnerships and the deepening of partnerships, and it's also work that energizes both of us, so you can be assured we enjoy this work as well. This past year, we focused in a number of areas in an effort to set some foundational things in place to build partnerships in the future. So as you can see, we were focused on understanding who is involved in our various partnerships in the district, understanding what's happening across partnerships in different environments. We connected with several stakeholder groups to figure out what their perspectives were on what's going well, and where we need to grow our capacity, and then we worked on collectively expanding that capacity. And by collectively, we are talking about working together with our partners to improve all of our capacity to do this work. As you know, partnership is not easy all the time, and so it does take a special skillset, and we are working to develop that through leadership opportunities, professional development, funding various positions that can move us forward, also looking at our data and what it tells us, and then... it tells us, and then working on actually developing new partnerships, and you've heard of several of those over the last few meetings. As you know, the district opted to forge ahead with the Community Schools concept, which Julie will talk more about in a little while. This actually holds enormous promise for this work of developing partnerships across the district. And by focusing on our capacity building in the Community Schools effort, even though we've named two schools where that is happening, it was evident to us, as we reflected on the last year, that that really is building capacity that will be useful across the district and building relationships with partners that will also be important across the district as well.
So we're going to start by kind of taking you through the beginning of our process and working with our vision card and really working this last, I guess, for the last two years on what the partnership processes looked like and basically the work that we've been doing thus far. So first of all, there was a current partnership process that was developed by a pretty large implementation team, I think about two years ago, if I'm correct. And that partnership process was tested, not this past school year, but the school year before, and I worked with a community partner to look at that, to see how it felt between the two parties, and we really worked on some good feedback moving forward to say, is this a process we want to use? How can we change it up a little bit, use what has already been established, but make it even better? So we started with that first process and have been growing it this entire school year. Along with that, we sought input, which is so very important and sometimes overlooked, but we talked to our stakeholders. And we didn't just talk to our partners, but we talked to staff, students, parents, administrators, and in one case, I'll talk about it in a minute, our neighborhood and our citizens of our community. The next thing we did was to select a tool. We have so many partners, which you're going to see here in just a minute, but we really wanted to look at who are our current partners and what kind of partnership are we, have we entered in with them? So you'll see on the slides, you cannot read this, but you have these in your board docs. The tool that we selected gives you levels of partnership that start, oh no, I can't read it. They go all the way down. What was the first one? Networking. Networking. A networking partner that moves all the way down to a collaborating partner. So our networking partners, we gave some examples down below as well, but really looking at partnerships and how they want to interact with us. We have some partners who are very willing to donate to us, which is very wonderful and much appreciated, thank you, partners. But then we have other partners down at the collaboration level who want to work with us, sit with us, devise a common mission and vision together, and really work hands-on in our work. So it was really important to us to look at that matrix and start asking our partners where they thought they fit in in that, in that matrix. So scrolling, you'll see over 200 current partnerships that we have, and this is definitely not all of them. Every time I hear of another program that isn't on the list, I would call Amy and say, "Amy, quick, please add this one to the list. We forgot this one," or "I didn't know about this one." So it's very hard at a district our size to know all of our partnerships because we also honor our individual teachers and the partnerships that they seek out and build for the support of our students. But we thought it would be kind of nice for you to see the scrolling list of all of the partnerships that we currently have, not all, but most, and we apologize to those that aren't on yet, but we will get you on there. And we just wanted to take a minute to thank all of those partners for whatever type of partnership that they give to us, we are so very grateful. So looking at our partnerships and the levels of partnership, then we started talking about some of our collaborative partners and what's going on, what's working for us. And as you heard me say a couple of weeks ago, I believe that Community Schools work is working for us, and our partnerships within this effort have been key to making this work at both Riverside and Gage. So this is a slide that just kind of describes for you once again a quick definition of what a community school is, what it looks like, and what it's trying to do, working together as a team, building that mission and vision together as a team, collaborating at all levels, and really hearing the voice of all stakeholders is so important so that we can build higher academics for all of our students. Now I get to talk about one of my favorite things that happened this year, and that would be our input gathering. For both of our sites, we conducted needs assessments for both, for students, staff, and community partners. And as I mentioned before, we also decided after the Gage set was done that we should add Neighborhood Needs Assessment. I'm going to start with that one because it's the most recent, and it just happened last Thursday all day long. We worked with our new partner, United Way, that's helping us with our Community Schools efforts. We worked out of Riverside. We started there in teams, and then they had maps prepared for us. We went in teams and just started knocking on doors of neighbors within the Riverside neighborhood, and it was powerful, it was amazing, it was hot, and it was incredibly worthwhile. I am just so proud of all of those that volunteered to go out and talk to neighbors and those that volunteered their information to us. We talked to so many volunteers that are retired that haven't had students in the school district for a long time. Many of them said to me, "Well, I don't have kids in the school district anymore. I can't tell you any answers." And my favorite question on the Neighborhood Needs Assessment, which you also have in your packet, is how can Riverside be a good neighbor to you? Because when we think about a community school, it should be a school that meets the needs of that entire community. So when I asked that question, and when we asked that question of the residents of the Riverside neighborhood, most people were kind of taken aback because they never thought about it being more of a two-way street. So it was just a wonderful day, and we now will go to the data collection piece of looking at all of the data from all of our stakeholders and then looking to see what are some of the needs that arise, what are some successes that we've had, but also where can we set our goals and where do we need to focus our work for the next school year? So that's kind of the same thing that happened with our other stakeholders, but I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that neighborhood piece because it was just so amazing. So this is another piece of input that we've also been working on at both sites. This was in partnership with the county, Homestead County Public Health, and we did a school health index. And this is just a screenshot of the Gage Health Index, which gives that site, it gives each site a snapshot of where they're at, both with emotional, now I'm going to forget, physical and mental health. So this is a great way to look. You can see there is a red, green, and yellow area. And again, as we look to set goals and work with our partners, it's another piece of data that we'll take into consideration as we're setting those goals and focusing our attention for the next school year.
And just to add maybe that this is just their overall scorecard? There's much more in-depth information available to the schools.
Yes, I forgot to mention that part. So this was completed at both sites by a pretty large team, and it took quite a while to compete, complete each module. So on this one, there are eight modules, and they worked with a variety of staff and stakeholders to answer the questions on each module so they could really get a great, well-rounded picture of what their school health actually looked like. And then the last piece on seeking feedback, it's hard to quantify this, but really we've been looking a lot at themes throughout the year. So looking at our District Family Engagement Team that meets once a month at the Northrop Building, I was able to pull out some themes. We did some gallery walks for our final meeting, and we also did a survey of all of the members who have been attending the District Family Engagement. And these are just a few themes that came out pretty clearly that we need to continue building relationships. We need to bring greater variety to our communication with our families. We need to increase publicity and outreach. We need to celebrate what's going right and make sure that other people know about it. So we thought this would be important to share as well.
And you have the full document with the stakeholder input themes with administrator and community partner comments as well in your board docs. So as we reflected on our, sort of the status of this work around partnerships, we feel like there is fertile ground in the district for developing these. As you saw with the scrolling list, we have over 200 active partnerships, all the way from networking partnerships where we're simply communicating with each other to share information and inform the work that we're doing, all the way to deep collaborations where we almost lose the identity of each single organization and come together and form a new identity. That would be the high end of the partnerships. There is value to everywhere in between, depending on what we need for the work that we do. So we don't want our partners to feel like, if they're not quite to collaboration yet, that there's something wrong with that. But we do feel like there's potential to deepen some of our partnerships. And one of the themes that came out of our partner input was that they are interested in deepening the partnerships with the district, serving more students, providing more services. So we do feel like the ground is fertile for this. We're not starting at zero. Our list is long, and we're continuing to collect, as Julie said. So a few insights that occurred to us as we were looking through this data. So first of all, family engagement really begins with making sure our families feel welcome. So one of the questions that we asked on the parent engagement needs assessment was about whether parents feel welcome coming to the school, whether they feel teachers are supportive of their students, whether their child likes school, those pieces to make sure the family felt welcome. And in both cases, we had a score from the parent survey of in the nineties, 90 percent, and in the student survey, slightly lower, but still above that 80 percent mark. And so we feel like, at the two schools where we did the deep dive in the engagement piece, feeling like we have maybe some basic engagement in place, but perhaps there is more work to do on deepening engagement. And so we feel like those two schools might be indicators, but we also wanted to make clear that we feel like we have to do that deep dive in all of our locations before we would be able to speak on behalf of all of those. The second insight that we bring to you is that while those families report that high level of feeling welcome in our schools, we, we know there's more work to do, and we are feeling like some of the supports that are in place now that didn't used to be in place will make a difference in that. We've listed a few there. The Community Schools site facilitators, as you know, that's a new role at Gage through the grant and at Riverside through the partnership with United Way, will be key in identifying the needs in family engagement and deepening those. Our family resource rooms will provide a physical structure to communicate to families that they are welcome and to provide some needed services. The site plans that the Community Schools are devising, and of course, our dream would be that all schools get to this point, but those site plans of identifying the needs at the site and then seeking partnerships and reaching out to deepen that will help that. Our Equity Specialists that were mentioned earlier are another group that are going to deepen that family engagement, and the community focus team and its work as well. A third insight, as you saw, the broad list of partners, and just reinforcing that those partners, when we reached out to them, indicated a consistent interest in deepening partnerships, serving more students with more services. So we feel that there's momentum in that area. We also noted that because those partnerships are in varying stages of development, they will need differentiated attention. So just like our students don't all learn the same way, they don't develop the same way, we have to provide what our students need on an individual basis, we actually are seeing a parallel in the partnership work, that a partnership needs different types of attention based on where you're trying to deepen or broaden. The last part of the vision card was really about a child-by-child inventory, and we just have to tell you that we're not there yet. We believe that that work requires a pretty hefty staff investment to get to the point where we could honestly say we know exactly what partnerships touch every single student in the district and what the outcomes are. And so, to be honest, we did not put a score in the vision card for that one because we just feel like we do not have the capacity at this moment in time to answer that question.
So taking our experience, creating our insight statements, by doing all of those things, we kind of came up with some key observations that we really wanted to make sure that we shared. The first three definitely aren't new and have probably been, they're not new messages, but we feel like they're definitely important to note. The first one is that partnerships are often difficult to classify because of their uniqueness. Before, when we were talking about the matrix that we found, we can't necessarily plunk Community Schools into one quadrant because what you find when you start working with our partners is that they really kind of are layered over on top of each other in different categories, and depending on what you're doing with that partner, it could be at a different level. And so really, we are happy to say that they're very fluid and that they're changing all the time, and we hope that we can continue to do that and not classify our partners and kind of put them in a box, if you will, because our partnerships are unique, like Amy mentioned, and we want to honor that and where they're at. The second is that our data can be useful, but unfortunately, it is limited to the voices who respond to it. So we are very aware that we are always looking for a variety of responses from our families, so it is representative of all of our families. We set a goal at Gage for our family responses to be at 25 percent, and we worked and worked until we had 33 percent because it was very important to us to get a wide variety of responses that represented the Gage family, the Gage School family, if you will. Also, I spent some time last week working with our Equity Specialists, talking about work that can be done over the summer and how we can outreach to families that may not have answering a family needs assessment survey as number one on their list, which is so many of our families. So how can we go to them and meet them where they're at? Go to places that are comfortable to them, engage in conversations, and start by building a relationship with a variety of our families, and then asking them, "Can we get your insight? Can we find out how you feel about this?" Because we really want to make school work for all kids. So we have, we feel really confident about the plan that we have over the summer for our Equity Specialists, and really for working as hard as we can to get that survey data back so that it is representative of all of our students. Current staffing levels, like Amy mentioned, just aren't there yet, but we're going to get there. We know that we, it would be awesome to have a list of all of the community partnerships that our students are engaged in, that serve our kids. It would, it would just be awesome. One thing that I did this year was to go and visit as many of the high school key clubs, NHS programs that I could, I'd love to go to more, and I probably will, just to talk to kids and see what they did over the school year, to encourage them to check out a variety of volunteering opportunities, both in the district and out of the district, before they settled on just one thing, or just writing off, you know, 20 hours for their recommended hours, or their required hours, I should say, but to really find what, what makes them tick and what they're passionate about. So even though we're not quite there yet, I think we have some steps in process so that we can get there and start talking about relationships, partnership relationships that our students are in with the community as well. And like I shared at the last board meeting, our collaborative partnerships require shared data, which is tricky, but we are getting there with our Community Schools work, and we are so hopeful that, as Amy mentioned, this is kind of key to getting more shared data out there so that we can work at really looking at what is working for students and our partners can see some of that as well at a broader level, and then we can set some very specific student goals so that we're meeting their needs. And we're just so excited about this opportunity to try this out in that capacity because when it has positive results, that will mean so much to other partnerships that we have within the district. So we have a lot to do, and it's great because keeps a job for me. it's great because keeps a job for me. To continue building capacity for partnership via our community schools' model, this won't come as a surprise to any of you, but my goal would be that we didn't just have two Rochester Community School schools. It would be great if we were Rochester Public Schools, Community Schools. So, we're going to work really hard at these two sites so that we can establish some great results and work with those community partnerships so that we can come back a year or two from now and tell you how great our students and families are doing and how they're thriving and changing, really changing some lives. We need to revisit the needs assessment and test a third environment. It was really nice, it wasn't planned this way, but it was nice that it worked out this way, that the Gage Elementary School needs assessments happened first. And then, we took a look at how that worked for Gage and were able to tweak it, add some questions, take some questions away, and like I mentioned before, add that neighborhood outreach piece that we did not do at Gage. In fact, Sam, Sam, Assistant Principal, Associate Principal Sam Pearson, Sam came and volunteered at Riverside and did the neighborhood needs assessment with us and was taking copious notes to take back to Gage because I'll guarantee you, they probably will do one next year. Continuing processing our feedback and addressing those themes. So, a theme is just a theme, but if you do something with it, it's actually work. So, we're going to take those key themes and then do some work next year with them. Looking at our vision card and metrics, we set these two years ago, two years ago before we really jumped in heavily with both feet into the work that we've done in the last year and a half. And so, some of them just didn't mesh. And so, we really need to go back and look at that and make it work for us and work for our students and families. And then, finally, really looking at the work of some experts in our family and community engagement field, Joyce Epstein is kind of a guru. And so, really looking at how we can embed some Joyce Epstein work into our district family engagement team at our sites, doing some professional development around the work that she has done will be key to the success of our program as well.
That concludes our report.
Thank you very much for a very thorough report. Board members, comments, questions?
Mr. Heinz?
Thank you very much for your presentation. This is really important work and I think it's pretty germane to some of the things that we've been discussing about improving outcomes for our students. I have some questions specifically regarding the Gage Community School Needs Assessment, the input that we received from students themselves. Do you know roughly how many students we have at Gage? Because I'm trying to figure out like what percentage of respondents. I see we had 233 respondents.
I can tell you the respondents. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. All the third, fourth, and fifth graders at Gage responded to the survey.
Okay, so this is third, fourth, and fifth.
That would be third, fourth, and fifth. And that's the same at Riverside as well.
Okay, perfect. So, one of the things that I noticed, just a few things, taking a look at your data here. So, when it says, for example, the reasons for not coming to school or why they missed school this year, approximately 10 percent, so essentially all response for third, fourth, and fifth grade. So, approximately 10 percent reported, and it kind of was truncated here, but it looks like no way to get to school. So, they reported at least one absence from not being able to get to school per their own report. So, I was a little surprised by that. And then, the other thing that I sort of noticed that sort of jumps out of your data, there's actually quite a bit here, to be honest, but that roughly, let's see, it's 233 students, over 150, it looks like around 160, I can't quite tell by the scale. But, don't take any art, music, or have access to that outside of school at all. So, I assume that those are pretty high-level priorities for these community schools.
It was also very interesting when we took all of the needs assessment and looked at them across assessment, if you will, especially speaking to your absence question. On one assessment, the highest percentage was that the student was ill. And then, we had students respond, and they were pretty honest, as you can see with their responses. So, while they might not always be ill, it's been very interesting to look at the perspective and the different stakeholders and how they've answered certain questions. And most definitely, those nuggets, that I've been calling them, have risen to the top and have been the focus of a lot of conversations.
I think this is self-reported data in this interpretation. It's probably a bit wider. But, it looks like 5 percent roughly, maybe a little less than 5 percent, but 5 percent basically say they don't receive any help with their homework at all. Maybe it's a good thing, I don't know. Maybe they don't need it. Okay, very good. This was, I mean, so, do we have this type of data for other schools at all?
We don't. This is the first of its kind, and we're hoping that this kind of will be a prototype or a test so that we could implement it at other sites.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neill?
I want to say that the two of you inspire me, both personally and professionally, both your level of energy and your level of activity, that 235 partners and the list, as you said, you probably know more than that. I had one big question about your community. You all just walked around? You left the building and walked?
Yeah, yep.
And just knocked on doors and said hello?
We did, and we had little tags that we hung on those that weren't home so that they could fill it out online. There's an online way of filling out the survey as well. So, sometimes we just left the paper copy with them, or we would stand there and fill it out with them and write as they gave us the responses. We kind of gave them a variety of options for completing the survey.
And then, the second question is a little more detailed. Riverside has a Riverside area and then a Riverside North. Did you all get up to Riverside North to do the same kind of thing?
We covered, I wish I would have brought the map. We covered, I would say, roughly 90 percent of the Riverside School District area.
Both the pieces that, because the one is actually, there's like something, Jefferson's in the middle.
So, we had to drive to some, we drove from Riverside to some areas parked and then walked through the neighborhoods.
Awesome. And then, the second part of this is, you just mentioned, Julie, you'd like to see this expanded. So, you've inspired us. What's the challenge to the school board? What's in the way? What could get out of the way that would make other schools possible to have this kind of empowerment thing? What's in the way?
We need more staff. We need more time. We need to prove that this works. I think we need to really work hard at our two sites and make sure that we've covered all of the, everything that we need to cover for these two sites to prove that this is worthy of time and change. It's a mindset shift. Honestly, we've talked about changing mindset is the first thing to do because school's not about school anymore. It's about so many other things. So, being able to partner with outside agencies is not always the most comfortable thing to do. Setting goals together with other agencies doesn't come very easily. But, if we are committed to doing that and we can do that and prove that it works, then the sky's the limit.
Member? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 7.02, Approval of Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine Services Agreement. This is an action item. I need to read the resolution. Be it resolved that School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the Sports Medicine Services Agreement with Mayo Clinic.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion, Mr. Heinz?
Just for the record, I'd like to get on the record that I'll be abstaining from this vote since this is a financial arrangement with my employer.
Okay.
Same. I work for Mayo also.
Okay, Mr. Heinz and Mr. O'Neill will be abstaining. Any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes with two abstentions. Item 7.03, This Approval of Co-op Dissolutions. This is an action item. And I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the co-op agreement between Rochester Lourdes High Schools and Rochester Public Schools for the girls swim and diving, wrestling, boys swim and diving, girls hockey, boys lacrosse, and girls lacrosse for students in grades seven through 12 commencing in the 2017-2018 school year. Be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the co-op agreement between Dover Yoda Public Schools and Rochester Area Public Schools for girls gymnastics for students in grades seven, 12 commencing in the year 2016-2017 school year. Need a motion?
Motion, so moved.
It's been moved, second?
Have to have a second before you can discuss it.
I'll second it.
Second.
Now, we have discussion. And I think at this time, Ms. Lewis, we have you and I think we have Mr. Michael Brennan, Superintendent of Rochester Catholic Schools here. See, Mark Peters out there. I don't know if he'll be joining. You would join. Others are whoever, maybe Mr. Quazy, whoever should be part of this. I know we've had a lot of people working on this, and the public certainly has an interest in all the discussions that's been going on regarding this. So, thank you all for being here. I'm sorry, sir, I missed.
Paul Menard.
Paul Menard.
Okay, so, we are actually proposing updates to the resolution agreement, and you will see that in your board docs in the red line version. I know that Director, our Chair Smith read everything to you as was prior. I am going to review the whole thing here because we've had a substantial number of changes. I'll review that in a moment, but wanted to talk about that Superintendent Munoz, our activities directors, myself indirectly have worked with Mr. Brennan as well as some of his staff, and we appreciate the partnership in this, and we're very appreciative of our evolution to get where we are today. So, with that being said, I'll review the items and then turn it over to you guys for comment. Okay, so, the first piece that you'll see here is talking about the dissolution between Rochester Public Schools and Rochester Lourdes High School, Schaefer Academy, Stuartville Public Schools, Byron Public Schools, and Dover Yoda Public Schools. So, all of these different agencies are in our item that we're bringing forward. The first piece that we are talking about is to dissolve the Rochester Lourdes co-op and adapted floor hockey prior to August 15, 2016. I want to pause there and make sure to clarify, there was no participation in this. We are not dissolving any Rochester Public Schools programming for activities and athletics for our students in any adapted sports. So, I just want to make that very clear. This was due to no participation. The next piece is girls hockey dissolution prior to August 14, 2017. We will still have our co-op with Lourdes. John Marshall Lourdes Girls will be for the 16-17 school year. Wrestling, boys lacrosse, and girls lacrosse will be dissolved prior to August 12, 2019, students in grades seven through 12. The next piece, dissolving the Schaefer Academy and Stuartville co-op in boys hockey prior to August 13, 2018, for students in grades seven through 12. Next, dissolving the Dover Yoda co-op in gymnastics, grades seven through 12. Next piece is dissolve the Byron co-op and adapted floor hockey, grades seven through 12, August 15, 2016. Again, no participation. We are not dissolving any of our adaptive sports in Rochester Public Schools. We will still be offering those. Next, we will talk about the co-op agreement between Rochester Lourdes High School and Rochester Public Schools for adapted floor hockey prior to August 15, girls hockey prior to August 14, I'm sorry, August 15, 2016, girls hockey prior to August 14, 2017, and wrestling, boys lacrosse and girls lacrosse prior to August 12, 2019, in grades seven through 12, commencing in the 2017-18 school year. Next, we will talk about approving the dissolution of the co-op agreement between Schaefer, Stuartville, and Rochester Public Schools for boys hockey in grades seven through 12 prior to August 13, 2018. I believe that I've hit all of the items here. So, I know that's a lot there, but wanted to go through because as you can see, there's more red on this document than there is black as far as our red lines. So, those are all the changes. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Mike Brennan. I'm the Director of Schools for the Rochester Catholic School System, and I'd just like to echo some of the comments that Ms. Lewis made regarding this, the process that has unfolded since the resolution was first proposed to the board. In particular, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the board as well as the district's administration for the gift of time and the opportunity to dialogue and to discuss our concerns, our perspectives, and here our advocacy for our students and the students of Rochester. So, I think we've come to a point of reasonable and mutual agreement and look forward to moving forward.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments from those? Marv, do you have anything? Usually have something to say.
I'm going to just echo what Mike said. Thanks to the board for taking a little time out on this deal and talking through it. We were most concerned about our swimmers. You know, there's no other pools around for us to go anyplace else. So, for the three boy swimmers and the six girl swimmers, they don't have a place to swim. So, with that off the table, we are concerned about hockey numbers. I think Mark and the public school are probably concerned also. As we look forward, are those numbers going to drop off? Is there enough girls to have four teams in town? Well, we're going to find out. So, we will take the hockey and run with it in a year. And then, lacrosse and wrestling, let's step back and take a look at it in three years, see where it's at. We got some time for the present kids at Lourdes to go through the system. And, you know, in three years, if the numbers still aren't strong, well, maybe we can sit down and work something out again. So, we do appreciate the time that was given to this, and it was great working with the administration.
Thank you.
I also want to echo a message of gratitude, being able to slow down and talk through the process and certainly work something out where our current freshmen can see through their entire high school experience. It also allowed us to see progress moving forward in terms of timeline. Being able to have a definitive time in which to revisit this, I think relieves us on both ends of any sort of ambiguity. So, now, we kind of know the timeline on both ends. We'll be able to come to the table again when it comes time to do that.
Thank you. Thomas, do you have a question?
Again, everything's been echoed here pretty well as their conversations, and we're just looking at a point that we can move forward. I know that this kind of stretches us out over three years, but it really does slow us down to make sure we do take care of the current ninth graders until they graduate in the program. And that was one of the bigger concerns as well that was echoed back and forth, is those kids are locked into a high school now as ninth graders this year, and this allows them to finish their high school career.
Well, thank you to all of you for taking the time to do this. Ms., did you have a question?
Yeah, just, you know, obviously, this has been a hot topic. And I, two questions I have. One is a question that continues to come up. Why now? With, you know, with the co-ops, we've had a history. Why now is the time to dissolve them?
There's no perfect time to do this, and we knew it would be an emotional conversation to have this discussion. But I think when we originally started co-opping with Lourdes many years ago, the situation came up now that we have many other private schools in Rochester and also many surrounding schools from around Rochester that we are continuing to say no to. And so, I think that's what kind of brought this to the forefront, is the fact that we were continuing to say yes to Lourdes, but yes, no to everyone else. And that's the thing that we were able to talk about at the table is, is that they're not the only private school in Rochester anymore and/or charter school and/or homeschool, which made our conversations difficult with those other parties.
And then, my second question, I just want to make sure I've got this right because you went over a whole lot of information, and I've memorized all of it. But, my understanding is that with the exception of girls hockey that'll have one more year, boys hockey that'll have two more years, all of the other sports, the kids who are currently involved in them as ninth graders will be grandfathered in. So, they will be done with high school by the time those co-ops get dissolved. Yes? Yes?
Correct, ma'am.
And, the other thing is, you know, we, we say we absolutely support adaptive sports. It sounds like we're dissolving a couple of those, but the reality is they're being dissolved because there aren't any students from out of the district.
Correct.
So we're not denying a spot on a team to any kid interested in adaptive PE or adaptive sports.
It's been emphatically communicated to us that should we have, and I can only speak for Rochester Catholic Schools, Lourdes, that should we have any interest, any students that would qualify for that type of program, a new co-op would be engaged in.
Okay, I said two, I meant three. My third question, I wanna make sure I got this right too, is that you have agreed, you and Mr. Munoz have agreed, that you will review this agreement, and if it turns out that we do need co-ops, that you'll rethink things down the road.
Correct, that we would engage in new cooperative agreements, because you're going to be voting on it, you know, the dissolution, you know, at the eighteen-nineteen school year for several of these sports, but yes, numbers would be reviewed, and the potential for new cooperative agreements to be newly established would be available to both school districts.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification, the Schaefer-Stewartville co-op with Sentry and boys hockey, those students will have the opportunity to graduate as well. So that's why that year is, when it sunsets, is when those two juniors have graduated. The adapted portion, three years ago we adat-- four years ago now, we added adapted softball, and at that time when we wrote the resolution to the High School League, it just had Mayo, JAM, and Sentry, because there wasn't any other interest. So this gets us down to aligning our three schools in that co-op. Originally, that co-op had eight or nine schools listed when we first started adapted floor hockey way back, and over time, we've taken the schools that haven't participated off that list if they didn't have participation.
I also wanted to clarify Mark's role here. While he is the Sentry Activities Director, he actually functions as a lead Activities Director for the Activities Department, so his role tonight is really in that lead role. So for instance, when I have things that I have to look at from an eligibility standpoint, I work with Mark, things like the co-op, I work with Mark, so I just wanted to make that clear.
He's representing all schools, in other words, not just Sentry.
Yeah, yeah.
I love coming to school board meetings.
Mr. Hines.
Thank you very much for all of you guys' work. We understand that the community, the, and the students, and the parents in our communities all have very strong feelings about this. I just, and I know that it's been discussed a little bit here, but I just wanna clarify one more time, when it comes to the, because this is new, the dissolution of the adaptive programs, I just wanna clarify, so if a student were to move to or enroll in Byron in the middle of the year and had an interest in an adaptive program like adaptive floor hockey, by dissolving this today, we don't delay the ability for that student to participate in our adaptive program. Like, do, do we have to wait for a new agreement to suddenly be in place for them to participate? Or is there some sort of clause from the state that allows them to participate while that's in process, like letter of intent or something?
Okay, so if we had a current Byron student that moved out of Rochester's school district?
No, just if somebody moved to, to Byron, that, in September, that, you know, and that family has a student that has a want or, or need for adaptive floor hockey, are they able to join, immediately join?
That school district would notify Rochester Public Schools that they're interested in us pursuing a co-op, and then we have up until the Friday before the season starts to notify the High School League. So if we get that in, in writing, normally, we do it in an email to the High School League, the Executive Director, and then it gives us time to get both school boards to approve it. So we can put that in place prior to the season starting.
But if the season has started, they can't, they can't participate?
In any program, that is correct. You can't start a program, you cannot start a co-op in any sport after the season has started.
If the co-op was in existence ahead of time, would they be able to participate that season even if they showed up in September? When, I don't know, I don't know the seasons.
Yes, they would be able to enroll, just like any other student in that situation. So like a new student would come to, let's keep Lourdes as our example, if Lourdes were to have a student that was wanting to participate in adapted softball, they would come to us right away because the parents would notify them of that interest. Even though this is dissolving it, we can come to both boards, both governing boards, and reestablish.
I, I guess with respect, I'm just trying to understand the benefit of dissolving the adaptive programs when by, I mean, is there, is there, what's, I'm trying to understand the downside to just having them in existence so that in the event that Byron or Lourdes would wanna take advantage of that, we don't have to, one, wait for a delay between the boards approving it, and two, having the situation arise where a student can't participate because they either attended Lourdes or attended Byron after the season has started?
Here's the downside. We have schools in Minnesota that already want us to dissolve Mayo, JAM, and Sentry's adapted softball and adapted hockey programs because of how good we are. So by having other area schools on that, it makes our team look bigger when it really isn't. So I want us to be very cautious of having all of the other schools listed when there's no participation there just for that reason. We are continually asked, when are you gonna break up Mayo, JAM, and Sentry in adapted floor hockey and an adapted softball? So, and for us to do that, we don't have the continuity within our own programs because the influx and outgoing students in our adapted programs, they aren't historically always participating, so some years we have big numbers, and next years we, we have small numbers, so, and that's one of the reasons why we really tried to keep our three public schools together for that, for that reason.
Ms. Ayl.
Can I just follow up with Mark, to Richard's point? Part of it is, there's the adaptive floor hockey, and then there's the adaptive softball, and you're, are you're just trying to align them together that one has open co-op and one does not? Is that correct? The, the floor hockey doesn't have any?
No, it's just a matter of listing the correct schools where the participation is currently coming from, is basically what we're trying to do with our alignment. Yep.
Ms. Becker.
A few comments. One, throughout this whole process, I'm really not very happy with how we were presented the information in the very, our very first presentation. I guess I had assumed that you guys would have already talked and, would have already spoken with the Lourdes folks before you, before you came and presented to us. That being said, I am happy that there has been discussion between RPS and Lourdes High School. But my question is similar to Director Marvin's question, why are we saying no to any co-ops at all? We just had a very long and informative and a wonderful presentation about all the community partnerships that, that we want here in Rochester. Everybody who lives within our school district pays our bills. They, they pay for us, and yes, their children go to other schools and do other things because their parents have chosen for them to do other things. But from my perspective, is I don't understand why, we're not saying yes to all the co-ops. I, they're, they're all of our kids, and I'm, I'm thinking again, with the partnerships that we want here in the community, to me, if I would, if I was, if I was deciding, do I wanna be a partner with RPS or not, I would, I would look at how this process went, and I might be a little bit concerned. I, I just have not had a good feeling about this the whole time we've been discussing it, and I, I probably have a little bit of a bias. I have, you know, a daughter who played hockey, so I have a little bit of a bias about the hockey program. But that being said, I also know, I was very happy that our daughter could stay in youth hockey for as long as she did, and not have to come up to a varsity high school program at a seventh or eighth grade level, because you know what, girls, I'm not saying that any of the girls aren't wonderful girls and role models, but high school girls talk about different things than seventh and eighth grade girls talk about. And there is the, the issue of, of safety for the girls, and, again, I, I don't understand why we're not saying yes to all the co-ops, and...
Certainly, and it, some of it is the schools that we have to compete against, Mrs. Becker, and those relationships within the Big Nine Conference can be quite strained, and we don't want that to be happening. Just because Rochester Public Schools wants to approve a co-op doesn't mean it's a slam dunk, because then we have to go to our Big Nine Conference, and our Big Nine Conference has to approve it. If our Big Nine Conference doesn't approve it, then it doesn't happen, and being three large schools in outstate Minnesota when we're surrounded by small communities, and, and it's, it's very true for Lourdes and how they have to develop their non-conference schedules and things, it's not easy for them either, because people look at Lourdes differently as well. They're a melting pot, they draw from everywhere, all those different scenarios, so it's, it's a difficult conversation, and we wanna make sure that we're trying to do what's right for the Big Nine Conference as well as Rochester Public Schools.
I guess, and, and from my perspective here as a board member, I'm, part of, part of my job is, you know, just for the Rochester Public Schools, but it's also how the Rochester Public Schools interacts with the rest of our city, and how we want partnerships with an awful lot of people in, in Rochester, and I, I don't see, I, I don't see this as a, as a positive, and I, I guess we're just gonna have to, you know, potentially agree to disagree on, on this, Mr. Kwesi.
Ms. O'Neil? I'll first. I just say, Mark, these, these co-ops have already been approved though, so if they were to stay, remain in place, it doesn't require the Big Nine to approve, and they've already proved them.
Correct.
And they don't, they don't have to prove the dissolution, or do they?
No, they do not. But we had co-ops in place many years ago in girls hockey that the conference met and told us, you will dissolve your co-op, and that was when we had John Marshall and Mayo and Sentry together as a combination, and then that's when we brought the new scenario with Lourdes and John Marshall in, and it split up the three big schools, so the, the conference weighed in very heavily on that one at that time, so. They could force our hand, but we'd rather not have that happen.
Ms. O'Neil?
A couple things. First, to the Lourdes colleagues, thank you for arriving, and I'm gonna use some of what you said, Mr. Brennan, in part of what I intend to say together. The first is, you've mentioned the gift of time, and I do think that this has benefited from a conversation together about what we wanna do. I also think there's the grace of working together, and I'm looking forward to a community conversation over the long term. If there's a sport or two that are at such a level that Lourdes is coming here saying, please, dissolve this co-op, we're so big, we're winning it all, we're crushing the neighbors, then that's what I, I believe we'd wanna hear. I, a quick, two-minute story of me, I went to Lester Prairie High School, which is now Glencoe-Severlake-Lester Prairie Wrestling Team. I have the school record for losses from Lester Prairie, still do. Thank you. But my point, my point being, I think this is a thoughtful thing, because the role of sports in education, it's valuable. It inspires kids, it challenges kids, it empowers kids. I've worked together with Mr. Kwesi over the past year, year and a half, in the Minnesota State High School League, and I think each of these conversations is important, that we get the grace of working together on each of those conversations. So if this one, I, I see lots that Dr. Lewis and, and your team together have crafted about future years, and I would rather plan on, prepare for next year's conversation, and keep this to just the right now. And maybe it's, I recuse myself because I work for Mayo, I also have a girl and two sons that play lacrosse, and my whole set of boys wrestle, so maybe I feel too much for the sports, but the smaller this can be, if it has to go forward at all, the better. And let's make a date for next year to talk about what's the right sizing matching of sports, and include the whole community. I mean, I think there are Rochester, Central Lutheran, there's the one next to me, Schaefer, thank you, ma'am, that should be in the conversation too, and Mr. Brennan, I, I do appreciate you all being here today and wearing the Lourdes purple, that, that's amazing, my nephew wore that, but thank you for coming, and Mr. Kwesi, thank you for your efforts in bringing together a bold conversation. I want us to keep going and, using your point, take the gift of time and use as much of it as we can together.
Ms. Hines?
Again, I'd like to thank our guests from, from Lourdes for, for joining us. You know, one of the, one of the concerns, we've obviously, as a Board, I think we've all received lots of community, community feedback about this potential dissolution. The, the one thing that I would, I would caution the, the public on, this is again from my personal perspective, and maybe people are a little concerned to, to even point this out, but there certainly is a perception in the community that Lourdes is a private institution, it happens to be a religious institution, per se, although there are a wide variety of, of folks attend the school, and it has the means to provide for their, their own athletics, and therefore ought to, and that every student has the ability to provide for their means to participate in those programs. And what I'd like the community to take some pause about and think, think of, is I think many of the Directors up here would share the sentiment, is we really consider the students of Rochester and even the surrounding communities as our, our kids, as our students. But as somebody who attended a public institution, needed help from a, a religious group to help me get into a different situation, I needed a change of venue, get into a, a private school, I didn't have the means. I didn't have a vehicle, to be honest, by the time I had gone to a private school, I didn't have the parents. But it was because the public school was willing to have a co-op for cross-country, and I, and the one thing I was talented at at the time was athletics. That specific decision of that Board was the reason why I was able to go to college on a half scholarship. And so I agree with Director O'Neal that certainly there are character building characteristics to athletics, but I'm more pragmatic, and as it stands right now, many universities offer scholarships for athletics, and that's the reason why I support athletics in education. And that is also the reason why I share Director Becker's sentiment in my deep concern for the way that this started out, because it really did show a disregard for the potential impact to our kids. And for that reason, I, I, I don't exactly understand the timing, I don't understand the rationale for dissolving the adaptive co-op that we have in place, it just seems to create one more bureaucratic barrier to a student participating, to one of our kids participating. And so for that reason, I hope that you don't take the way that things started out as an indicator of how our relationship and partnership will continue to grow down the road.
Ms. Muck?
Again, I, I appreciate, Mr. Brennan, that you and Mr. Munoz, I think, had thoughtful conversations and agreed that what you were doing was in the best interest of all of our kids. I, I share with Director Becker the sentiment that all the kids in Rochester are our business, and that we really do need to work together. Question for you, quick question for you. With these dissolved co-ops, as far as you know at this point, will this prohibit students at Lourdes from participating in sports? I mean, will you have kids that if these dissolve, they won't have a team to play on?
As, as proposed right now, no, I don't think that's, that's the issue, which is why I was most grateful for the administration for, for hearing. why I was most grateful for the administration for, for hearing our concerns specifically as they relate to boys and girls swimming and diving. Because in that particular sport, precisely what you're offering here, that, that would have been the situation. They would have had no other options.
So, I mean, a good outcome could be that if, in high school at least, our goal is to make sure that kids have the opportunity to participate, it's not about winning necessarily, it's about participating, that this might actually give more kids a chance to get more floor time, field time. Clearly, I didn't do sports that. And that we are committed to continuing the conversation. So in the event that we find out that we're not serving kids well in any of our schools, we'll come together and have another conversation and establish a new co-op. Okay?
I guess, I would say, I, I too did not like where we started out on this conversation, but I'm pleased to the fact that we did take the time and we got the parties together and we've come to an agreement that, that is going to work for all students in the community and with the promise that we're going forward, that we revisit this so that, you know, we make sure that all kids in our community have the opportunity to participate and aren't left out, you know, somehow for many of the reasons Mr. Hines said and, and Ms. Becker. So I think at, at, you know, I support where we are at, at this time. And I, again, appreciate all the work that you folks have put into that. I would also, one thing that Vice Chair and I have talked about is, is looking at the, looking at the policy, looking at the policy itself, the board's policy on this, going forward to making sure that these decisions of how we establish a, a co-op, when we establish and when we terminate them, will be board-driven. So the, the request will come to the board and the board will determine that we go ahead and discuss the poss, this possibility and then let the administrators do the work that you do in, in crafting the language if that were to occur, how that, how that would take place. So that's all I have to say. Did you have something you wanted to say as well, Ms. Elliott?
Yes. Chair Smith, I just wanted to echo your sentiments about the policy piece. I think, as we all know, there's been a lot of talk, chatter, emails, phone calls, et cetera. But to me, it's what is the role of the board in this? I think this is a particularly, let's say, sticky discussion and point for our board members because we do have some personal experience, either ourselves or our children, or not. But we need to rise above that because the role of our board is to craft policy. And the role of our board is to look towards our administration and our staff to give us good information. And so I appreciate all of you being here tonight. I also appreciate the forward-looking of what may come next for our co-ops. I have no questions or qualms about specific things that have come before, and I'm pleased that we will look at the policy piece because that is most important to the work that we do here from this table.
Now, Ms. Workman, we'll see that we move in that direction, I'm sure.
Well, sure. I'd just like to let everybody know that if you don't already know, Mr. Quezly will completely 100% agree with me on this, is I am not an expert in any of this. And as such, the fact that your administration and our administration, with the input from knowledgeable people, were able to arrive at this agreement is enough for me. I don't need to do any more digging or any more looking at numbers or reading any more emails about the specifics of this program or that program because I trust in your ability to sit down with each other and work this out. So I am very supportive of this agreement and I really appreciate the time that all of you have taken to work this out. Thank you.
Chairman Smith?
Yes.
I just would like to, to thank everybody for these great comments and I, and I want to announce publicly that we'll start the fundraiser for girls hockey because we don't know how the heck we're gonna pay for it, so...
Didn't I see the boys raising some money down the street?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Yeah, I thought maybe you'd have the girls helping.
Mr. O'Neil?
A question of a different flavor, but it leads us potentially to later today. If hockey is dissolved, which that's the one I'm hearing, if I understand it all, Dr. Lewis, please correct me if it's not the right thing. Dissolving hockey is the one primary action of today.
The girls' hockey program.
Girls' hockey program. How much money does that save Rochester Public Schools?
Can you do the financials on that?
Wouldn't save any.
It would not save us any money.
It would cost us money, Dan.
Because we're still hosting two teams. And we have no agreement in place for cost per participant back from Lourdes or anything. So there is, other than the participation fees that the students pay to register for the sport, that, that would be the only
Financial bet.
Financial component, other than fundraising like every one of our other programs does to sustain.
But so the dissolution results in no change to financials, or?
It costs the district money.
To dissolve?
Yes. Because if the girls who are on the, the team from Lourdes, they would pay the participation fee. So now, since they are not on the team, they would not pay that fee.
So is that a negative impact? The, the loss of fees from the participants?
Hundred and eighty dollar, or, girls hockey is two twenty-five.
Twenty-five times ten kids.
Yeah, ten kids.
So twenty-five hundred, but twenty-two fifty.
But your cost basically would be the same.
Right. Our cost for transportation, officials, rent, ice rental would be the same.
And then, I, I for one, and sometimes I go below the line and jump into garbage trucks. I'll even go there to say that that way. And it's about lacrosse and wrestling directly because those are the 2019 and everything beginning from August 12th, 2019, dot, dot, dot. How many people play on a lacrosse team? It feels like a lot.
Well, we've got, there's twelve, twelve Lourdes boys that come over to, and they really, they really fill out the junior varsity team for John Marshall Lourdes. And girls, we had three come over.
Okay. I mean, because the team itself, and I spent the entire, we had a Rochester tournament, one of the biggest in the state.
Twelve and ten participants on the field.
Twelve kids on the field and like, it's like hockey where you jump over...
Line changes, yes.
Thanks. And I'm no pro in it either. I'm a first-year dad with pink hockey, or a pink lacrosse stick. So my point being, as I read everything from August 12th, 2019, and when we talk about resolving for sure lacrosse and wrestling, I would feel more comfortable with 12 months from now, this same set of folks recommends what we ought to do, with an understanding then that there, there might not be lacrosse and wrestling beyond 2019, but I'd rather not decide that today. And does that seem objectionable if we kind of say, "Please come back a year from now, talk lacrosse and wrestling, and you all tell us if you can get 15 kids to jump over the boards or whatever." There's no boards in lacrosse, I don't get it.
No, there's no boards in lacrosse. One of the, the reasons behind those two sports, the boys and girls lacrosse, and the, well, let's, let's stick with that one first, is that sport is growing. The youth program tells us it's growing, the, the high school team is sustaining great numbers. Where we'll be in three years, we don't know. But we also agreed that in three years, maybe Sentry's the one that might need the participants and not John Marshall, or Mayo might need the participants, not, not John Marshall. So by putting an end date out there, we're notifying that this particular co-op is going to be done. Would there be discussions for rearranging? Possibly. But it also gives us three years to continue to work on those participation numbers across the district between all four schools.
I, I guess, as I see the agreement you've come up to, is we've come up to an agreement that manages the programs that we have in place now, that effectively manages that to closure, but then we begin discussing what comes after that at the, at the appropriate time as part of the agreement as well.
Correct. Because new co-ops are a minimum of two years. So when we get to that point, then we can at least put another co-op in place for two years if we need to, saying that there's sixth and seventh graders coming through the program, we want to continue. Could it look the same that, as it does now? Possibly. But we, it's hard to project that three years, just at this point.
Okay. Very good. Other comments, questions? If not, I assume we're gonna be taking a vote on the motion as, as amended with the...
We have a motion to...
Yeah, we need a, a motion to amend the, or, we could either, one, we could do one of two things. We either amend this, vote the one down, and then we can reread the resolution as amended and vote, take a vote on that. So whatever the board's pleasure on that is, we can either amend this one or, and move on or otherwise. Mr. O'Neil?
Director Smith, I guess this would be your preference, but I would like to entertain a, I don't know which, which order you'd prefer to do this, but I'd like to entertain a motion to potentially strike. The proposed, the proposed change to it has these adaptive programs in there, and I'm, I don't know how comfortable I am at dissolving the adaptive programs. So I would, I would prefer if there would be a way to bring them, the...
Well, then let's do this. If you want a, a motion to do that, let's, let's vote on the motion that's on the table, at, at the table at this time. Hopefully vote that down because I don't, don't think our partners at Lourdes would be happy with, happy with that one. So if we vote that one down, then we can read the new one, then you'll have the opportunity to offer an amendment to that.
Okay.
So the thing presented on the 7th of June?
The one that Gary just read.
Right. So the one I just read, the motion I, the motion I read. So that's the one we want to vote down, we'll reread a new, reread a new motion.
Okay.
So if we're clear on that, and any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Now, I guess, as a chair, I'll, I'll read a mo, I'll read, make a motion that we approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the co-op agreement between Rochester Lourdes High School and Rochester Public Schools for adopted floor hockey prior to August 15th, 2016, girls hockey prior to August 14th, 2017, and wrestling boys lacrosse and girls lacrosse prior to August 12th, 2019, in grade 712 commencing in the 2017, 2018 school year. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the co-op agreement between Schaefer Academy, Stewartville, and Rochester Public Schools for boys hockey for students in grade 712 commencing prior to August 13th, 2018, in grade 712. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the cooperative agreement between Dover-Iota Public Schools and Rochester Public Schools for girls gymnastics for students in grades 7 through 12 commencing prior to August 15th, 2016. And be it further resolved that the School District, Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the dissolution of the cooperative agreement between Byron Public Schools and Rochester Public Schools for the adopted floor hockey for students in grade 712 commencing prior to August 15th, 2016. So I made a motion to approve, and it's been second. Now, discussion of that. Did you want to entertain a...
Yeah. So I, I think that my concern is about creating a bureaucratic process for somebody that may not enter at the beginning of the year, for both the adaptive floor hockey programs at Lourdes and the adaptive floor hockey program in Byron. And so I'd like to make, make an amendment to remove both the adaptive Lourdes and adaptive Byron floor hockey from the...
Is there a second to that motion?
None.
Very none. That motion fails. Any other further discussion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that is like that, but also strikes from the material here, the references to wrestling and lacrosse, both boys and girls, as of August 2019, for two reasons. A, I fully support where Director Hines is headed. I only didn't second it because I feel making decisions about 2019 wrestling and lacrosse, I heard lacrosse is a growing sport. I sensed from $500 worth of equipment that one of my children made me buy, that it might grow a lot, it might not grow a lot. And so I hesitate to have a piece on this motion tonight on something in 2019.
So you, you're making a...
So I wanted, I would strike what Director Hines struck and also line through the, and wrestling, lacrosse, boys and girls prior to August 12th, 2019, in grade 712.
So you're, you're moving to strike adoptive floor hockey and the, what you...
And the second part of that. And the sense being, the, the staff members here have done a great job getting together, taking the time, telling us what's gonna happen. I would presume a year from now, there's a person in purple and a person representing all of Rochester community saying, "Here's the plan for the next one."
Okay, there's a motion.
So a motion.
Motion on the floor.
Which is like yours, but striking lacrosse.
Couldn't we have any more discussion on that?
No, not, not till there's a second. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and second to amend, to amend the proposal as, as stated. Ms. Becker?
Okay. How come you, with you guys' line of thinking, why are you not keeping the Dover-Iota gymnastics?
An oversight on my part and completely, would be completely amenable to rephrasing my original amendment.
Are you looking to make an amendment?
Trying to.
Chair Smith?
This, this, it's this one?
Yes.
The...
The Byron School Board has also approved the dissolution of the adapted floor, or the adapted floor hockey co-op already.
They've approved Dover-Iota.
Yes, and it's waiting for our approval. Dover-Iota has already approved the dissolution of the gymnastics program because of no participation. So those two boards have acted on it. Now it's a matter of our board acting on it as well.
Okay. Well, then that makes your point probably about the Dover, adding Dover, move, they've already dissolved it, so having it in there in our resolution probably doesn't make, doesn't, doesn't make, doesn't make any sense. Now, is there any other?
I, I guess the only, the only comment I would have is I, I'm aware that it may be the case that other, the other board in Byron has moved to dissolve it. But again, I don't see the, creating a, a barrier to it, especially when we predicate the conversation with, if there's anybody that needs it, we'll definitely create it. I think that what we're really doing here is creating a, a barrier to somebody who shows up late in the system. And I think that that is a sentiment that has been extended to the adaptive programs, but not necessarily to other programs. And so what we're really saying is, if somebody needs it but happens to show up at, at the right moment, then with enough time ahead of time, we're willing to do that. But if they're a week late or two weeks late at moving to one of these communities, that, well, it's just tough luck. And that's, that's sad, that's not putting students first. But, I mean, it's, it's prima facie.
Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Quezly. Doesn't it just take one school to have the dissolution, or do both schools have to agree to it of a co-op?
It's a one-year deal.
One-year...
No. If, so, so Byron, do both, do both schools have to approve the dissolution for it to occur?
If, if Byron wants to dissolve it, it will happen. So to answer your question, yes.
So it's a moot point, really?
Yes. With a minimum of one year if there's no mutual agreement. So...
Okay.
I have a question too. I know the, part of the information we have is that we're, we're giving every sport at least a one-year notice, kind of. Is that, is that a Minnesota State High School League rule?
Yes.
Because then we can't dissolve something next August, can we?
That's a year from now.
Didn't it say August 2016?
This is June. Okay. If it's not mutually agreed upon, you have to give notice of one calendar year to the other school.
Okay.
That's in the High School League bylaws. You can mutually agree to dissolve as soon as the season is concluded.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. O'Neil?
I'd like to make a comment, but can we clarify what the motion is, please?
The motion?
Or the amendment to the motion?
Have the clerk, clerk do that.
Okay. What I understood is that Mr. O'Neil moved to remove adapted sports, boys and girls lacrosse and wrestling from the resolution as stated. Mr. Hines seconded that motion.
Okay. Mike, so my comment would be to speak to both Director Hines and, and Director O'Neil. Director Hines, I appreciate your concern and interest for the potential student coming from Byron or Lourdes to participate in the adaptive programming. But I would also point out, we currently, I'm assuming, based on what I've seen, we don't have that agreement with Dover-Iota, Stewartville, Plainview, Elgin, Schaefer, anything else in adaptive? Is that correct? Sorry, I'm really testing you, Mark.
In adapted floor hockey, schools that have moved to dissolve were Casson-Manorville and Stewartville last year, so they're already off the books. And then now with Lourdes and Byron, they've agreed. So there are four schools that have agreed to dissolve the co-op.
Correct, thank you. So my point being that if there was a student at Casson-Manorville now, we have already dissolved that co-op last year. And so they would be in the same situation if a student moved into Casson-Manorville and wanted to participate in adaptive sports. So, um, respectfully, I disagree with the reasoning to keep the Byron and Lourdes adaptive piece open.
Mr. Heinz?
So I, I, I'm aware that I'm not likely to win this, especially since there's been work, apparently your, uh, other districts approached for the dissolution before it came to us. But I would say that we should, uh, fight the urge to use the rationale that because some people have a bad situation, everyone should have a bad situation. I think that that's a poor, uh, a poor approach to policymaking. Uh, we have the ability here to avoid unnecessary bureaucratic barriers to somebody participating. Uh, and with the knowledge that it is hard, uh, there is multiple processes between boards and having to go to the High School Association for approval. Uh, once you have something like this in place, uh, it would, it would seem to behoove us to, to keep it in place. But the, the ball's already started rolling before it's even gotten here, so we're just here to stand.
If I may, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is because, using the Byron example, someone moves in, because they've dissolved the co-op, and we would keep it, if they move in after the school started, we still would not be able to allow the student to participate.
That is, that is...
Because they would...
That is correct, because apparently Byron has already moved to dissolve it. That wasn't, uh, that information wasn't available at the time.
So if you were thinking, I understand, we're, we're getting through this process, I understand. Is there any other, uh, questions, comments? If not, okay, go ahead.
I have a, a, a comment on, uh, Director O'Neill's, um, amendment about changing the date. Um, I firmly believe that, um, this group in front of us has worked very long and hard on this arrangement, and I am not comfortable deviating from the recommendation in terms of either sport or dates.
Let me reiterate, at a cost of money, we're talking about dissolving wrestling and lacro, two lacrosse teams, at a cost of money to Rochester Public Schools versus keeping it in place until you all come in here telling us, Mr. Brennan, I'd like to dissolve wrestling, I'd like to dissolve lacrosse, because I don't think we're going to have a team. When you guys have a football team, you crush the competition. When you can have a team, I know you want a team. But I'm not feeling that, seeing that, hearing that either financially or from a best student performance thing about wrestling, lacrosse, boys and girls. And we're trying to decide years in advance when, uh, Mr. Quezly and the other folks in the State High School League are very nimble and able to respond in one year. So why we're even discussing it, that's the reason for my motion. I, I understand, we may disagree, that I think lacrosse, we'll know more about lacrosse a year from now or a year and a half from now than we do today. And we don't need to spend money to make less opportunity for students.
Ms. Becker?
Isn't there something, I don't know if it's in our policy, and I apologize if I've not read it, um, but how often are we supposed to be looking at the co-ops? Is it on a yearly basis? Is it every other year?
Every two.
Every two years? Well, it's 2016 now, so if we have to look at this in two years, what, I agree with Director O'Neill, why are we saying anything about 2019?
Well, let's not assume it's two, it's two years. Let's, if you want, let's, let's take time to look at the policy and see what it says. Let's not assume anything in that regard. Ms. Workman?
Um, it was sort of my understanding that you chose the date of 2019 so that the, the students who are freshmen now would know that they would be able to play for the rest of their entire career, and that students who are younger than ninth grade would then be forewarned that they might not be able to play for their entire high school career. Is that correct? Okay, so that does not preclude any other decision of saying, in two years or in three years, you know what, we're going to keep this co-op going. So I think that is always an option with this timeline, and that by saying 2019, we're really doing those folks a courtesy, so they can understand where the program is potentially moving, so that they can make plans or decide whether or not they would wish for their students who are younger than ninth grade to, to, um, continue.
You know, I'm happy to sit up here and continue to have this discussion until midnight, if you want, if you want to, because we, we do have a tendency to do that, and I want everybody to feel like they're, they got their, their opinion aired. But again, we've had a group of people sit down, work together, bring back a proposal that they agree to, to this board, and now we're sitting at this table trying to renegotiate that. And, uh, I, I have a bit of a problem with that, quite honestly. I don't think that's our, that's our role to do that. Uh, but if you insist on going down that path, that's what we'll do as a board. So that's all I'm going to say. You have something you want to say? Any else you want to say? Mr. Heinz?
Yeah, I would. Uh, so, so I'll respectfully, uh, I'll respectfully withdraw my support for the amendment, considering the work that has, uh, already occurred at the other boards to dissolve the adaptive co-ops. But I would say that, uh, anytime that we're trying to, um, ensure that we're looking out for the interests of our students first, I don't care if we have to sit here till midnight and renegotiate it. Uh, we will do that work. Uh, that is the, that's responsibility of the board. Uh, but in light of the fact that I can't change the fact that, uh, other boards have already dissolved this, the, there's no way for us to prevent, uh, what I was trying to prevent. So I withdraw my support for the amendment.
Okay. So there's no second. Is there another second? I'll ask for a second. Okay, there is no second?
Let me try a final time then with a different...
Hearing no second, hearing no second, that motion is now off the table. Okay, now go ahead.
I have a different motion, which, folks who are paying attention, and I consider wrestling coaches, lacrosse coaches, kids T-ball coaches, soccer coaches, probably unnoticed that this conversation is going to continue. Thanks. Sensing agreement across four heads. I would still move to strike the references to girls and boys lacrosse and to wrestling right now from this policy decision that we're making to not make a decision that takes effect in 2019. Thank you. That's my motion.
Is that the motion he, is that the same motion?
Except for the adapted sports.
Except, okay, so he has a...
But I'm trying to also articulate why I don't think it's a trivial non-policy point to have a community conversation that gives us the gift of time and the grace of getting together. And if someone's not been unnoticed that wrestling isn't...
Director, you should make your motion, and then you should have a second before you, um, say why you want to make your motion.
Did I lose control of this meeting? I think I did.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate that.
Okay, so there is a motion on the, a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Now you can have discussion on the motion.
I'd love to see you all back next year to talk about wrestling and lacrosse, your direction. I'd like to even meet the wrestling coach. I'm a poor wrestler, I lost a lot, but I'd like to help the program for all the kids. Same with lacrosse, but I'm even worse at that. So I hope to see you all again. And Mr. Quezly, I do appreciate your work daily, hourly, and on an annual basis to bring all sports together for our community. Thank you.
Ms. Marvin?
With respect, I, I'm not quite sure what, what the concern is here, because my understanding, again, is that if we dissolve these tonight, with, with the idea that they will be dissolved, our, we're planning on dissolving them at the end of the 2019 school year, and if a year from now, we discover we need the co-op, we'll just reinstate it. I mean, I, it seems to me, I, I love the idea that, you know, we want to see how this goes. Maybe it'll be better for kids. If we decide it's not, come back together and start a co-op, maybe with a different school, different configuration. But I, I don't, I don't see the downside.
I think, uh, if there's one thing, I'm sure this board, you know, you guys can disagree with me, but I think the board will be fairly united on this, that our, one of the expectations we have is that the dialogue will continue to take place on, on these cooperative agreements. And if and when changes deemed appropriate need to be brought forward to the board for concern, that that will, that that will happen. I mean, I think, uh, I think hopefully we could all agree on that. And if that's the case, I, I think your point is well taken that it's immaterial whether we pass that motion or not in this, in that sense, as long as there's a commitment to revisit that. And, and when it, if, and when it makes, brings appropriate to bring that back to us, situation changed, bring it back to us. That's all I would say in that. Is there any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion, uh, to amend.
To amend.
You want to read the amendment, the motion to amend?
Mr. O'Neill moved to strike boys and girls lacrosse and wrestling from the resolution. Ms. Becker seconded the motion.
Okay. With that, I'll call, a vote on, all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Okay.
Your party discussed?
Just amend.
Of the amendment, just amend, just the amendment, just the amendment, the amendment to the motion, as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. And we're back to the, the original motion as stated. Is there any further discussion or other motions to amend? Hearing none, we will now vote on the motion.
The original.
The original motion, as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, all your time in helping us get through this process. And again, I think, again, the board is unanimous in its, in its support for what, you know, your continued discussions, and if you think things changed that we need to be aware of, bring those back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a five minute?
Yes, and we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Brenda?
Oh.
We're going to reconvene at 8:01 PM, and we'll move on now to item 7.04, approval to enter into a three-year exclusive agreement for varsity game uniforms. This is a briefing item. Ms. Lewis?
I'm actually going to turn this right over to Mark Quezly.
Okay. Good evening again. Uh, three years ago, we had an exclusive agreement with Nicholson Athletics and Under Armour with game uniforms. That contract has now, uh, will expire here at the end of June. So, uh, we worked with the purchasing department and put out an RFP, and had six vendors that responded. And, uh, between the purchasing department and the activities directors, we reviewed those, um, proposals. And before you this evening, we have a recommendation that we would like to enter into agreement with the company, BSN, which is a, um, major, uh, athletic equipment and supplies company, and they also do athletic uniforms. The nice, um, product of this agreement is the fact that we're not locked into one game uniform. We receive, um, some very nice discounts on multiple different uniforms, plus still the Under Armour if coaches so choose to do that. And then, um, a rebate system similar to the Nicholson, but actually the rebates are more than what Nicholson had given us, um, three years ago.
This is a, um, briefing item, is anything, nothing's going to change it, I assume?
No.
In the pricing or the recommendation?
I'd like to move this to action if it's helpful.
That would be helpful.
So moved.
Okay, move to action. Is there a second?
Second.
Then move, second, this move to action. Any discussion on that? All those in favor moving this item to action, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. It's now an action item. I'll read the resolution. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 authorizes a three-year contract with BSN for varsity game uniforms and the option of other additional supplies, equipment, and apparel. Move approval. Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I just want to say I think you really knocked it out of the park with this one.
Thank you, ma'am.
She's into sports analogies right now. Uh, any other comments or discuss?
It's a slam dunk.
I, I think we can move along. We've covered all our bases here.
Okay.
That was a home run, yeah.
Okay. It's won't be like the Golf Channel review of whether the putt moved or not. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is approval of 2016-17 school district budget. This is an action item. Ms. Lewis? Oh, I got to read the resolution, I'm sorry, it's action, yeah.
You got lots of numbers.
Someplace here. Okay. Be, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve and appropriate the 2016-2017 original expenditure budget in the following amounts. General fund, 211,652,562 dollars. Non-allocated site funds, $9,145. Food services fund, $9,243,559. Community services fund, $12,296,825. Building construction fund, $400,000. Debt service fund, $11,178,909. Workers' compensation fund, $1,899,070. Dental insurance trust fund, $2,258,893. Health insurance trust fund, $26,684,024. Internal service fund, paper tiger, $360,000 and 883, $360,883. OPEB irrevocable trust fund, $25,000 for a total of $276,887. Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion, board members. Just for the public to know, we had an extended work session that went over this budget, 220-page document thoroughly. So this isn't the first time that this item has been before us. Um, any other, Ms., Ms. Becker?
So I know when we, um, when we passed the referendum earlier this year, we, um, we were anticipating that we would have, um, extra money. Um, is that, um, that would increase our, the general fund? So have we done that with this budget?
We, um, have a little bit, I think it's 6.3% over, um, or it's 0.3% over the 6%, but we are not, um, on target as far as the amount of overage that we had talked about from the referendum. So we are below the, um, level that we had talked about, but we are above the 6%.
So in order to, in order to make good on that promise to the voters, without the addition of additional revenue from state general funds, we'd be looking at making budget cuts in order to live that, or, or just doing something different other than what, what we told voters we'd be able to do?
Looking at, um, different programming, um, and also looking at potentially more revenue. Also, I talked about before, and I'll say it again, um, looking at that, uh, our lobbying efforts around, um, cross-subsidy dollars.
So there's still time to honor that, but as on now, we are not on track to do that.
That's, that be the correct?
At the end of the 16-17 school year, our financials look different, which, uh, Mr. Carlson will be presenting, I believe, in July than they did for the referendum. And that's what we talked about during our, um, study session on that, was, uh, those factors that are in that one sheeter in the beginning.
Ms. O'Neill?
A question of clarification, and as you might suggest, it's a hop away from percentages to numbers. We're 0.3% above the minimum, which is about how much in dollars?
Am I right to say about 633,000?
And I'll give you a little bit of time, it'd be a bit of...
I'm looking right at John for the exact number. Ooh, I was on. 620,000.
Thank you. So, so 620,000 versus, and memory serves me, there's like 7.3 million, or 7.3% was where we had hoped to be. So...
He has all the financials there.
So we had hoped to be, so we're 620,000 above the reserve that we have as a policy, and we had said that we would be how much in dollars above the reserve? And as that happens, I do want to say that this document, which is available both online and PDF, but available to school board members to read it, um, it's a lot of pages, but a lot of depth and a lot of detail. It actually helps us understand, um, who all works for the district, all the different categories of people, and how much it all costs. So, so thank you for that, as we... So how many thou, hundreds of thousands of dollars did we think we'd be ahead?
I'm not ignoring you, I'm just...
Yeah, no, and then another, another question. I know John will get there, he's got it.
The pauses still allow him the time to find the answer.
We, we had assumed about $5.2 million in excess of the reserve minimum.
So $4.6 million difference.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seven point oh six, approval of two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget adjustments as of April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. This is a briefing item. Ms. Lewis?
I'd like to call Mr. John Carlson, our Executive Director of Finance, please.
Good evening, School Board members, and Assistant Superintendent Lewis and Clerk Edgar. I'm pleased to present to you the third quarter budget adjustments for the fifteen sixteen school year. So we're gonna go back a year from the budget we just approved. Uh, we bring forward these budget adjustments quarterly so that we can stay on target with what's actually happening and adjust the budget to new information that's come upon us. As we did the second quarter, I just wanted to compare some of the major changes that have happened fund by fund. And, um, you've got all the supporting detail in line by line in board docs, but for the public and, and for brevity here, we'll just deal with the highlights. In the general fund, the revenue budget was one hundred ninety-two point eight million. The expenditure budget was one hundred ninety-nine point four million. Uh, now we're bringing forward a hundred ninety-six point four million dollars of revenues and two hundred and seven million dollars of expenditures. Um, the largest changes there are the addition of the technology C O P. So we issued the debt to buy all new computers. Uh, that's four point two million dollars of revenue and four point two million dollars of expenditure. So that's part of our three-year plan that, that we do. We just don't assume that upfront until you've actually given permission to do that. Staffing expenditure changes are about one point four million dollars. There are a variety of changes in there, including the teacher contract settlement, then different lane changes and adjustments, um, as well as a few new positions. And I'm going to highlight F T Es in just a moment on the next slide. Construction projects, uh, one point one million, and then making our fifteen sixteen O P E B contributions. So we're expensing nine hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund, and we're moving it over to that O P E B Irrevocable Trust Fund. And that's the last fund I'll finish with at the end here. So you'll see that nine hundred thousand come up again. And then on the revenue side, again, we've had some donations miscellaneous. We true those up, uh, two hundred thousand dollars there. And then we've made an adjustment in our special ed revenue. Uh, there's two different sources of money there. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars is in our third-party billing, and then two hundred and seventy thousand was in our regular state aid special ed. We made an adjustment downward there. F T E variances. So this chart compares where did we start the year in the far right column to where we were, where were we on the last budget adjustment? And the first column is where we were as of April thirtieth. So these are numbers of F T E that we pulled out of our system, um, compared to the previous period. So as you can see, there's small adjustments in our teachers and our paras. Uh, you might wonder, why does it go up? Why does it go down? Uh, at different points when we pull the budget, there might be long-term subs. There might be people out on leaves of absences, so then they get backfilled with additional F T E. And so that kind of, um, moves of the budget around there. In our off-schedule area, I just wanted to point out that part of the reason there it jumped up was, uh, some reconfiguration in a couple of our areas, um, such as three new equity specialists. So we use monies that we had saved on other items within the integration plan, and we added those positions. We also did some restructuring in our facilities department, and we cut some overtime. We cut some contracted services, and we created, um, a couple of different positions there that were needed. Uh, relative to where we started the year, we had, still have about the same number of staff per student ratio. In fact, the teacher-to-student ratio has improved very slightly from where we started the school year. Fund ten is our non-allocated fund. This is where we collect most of our donations now. We've been trying to, um, segregate those out to this fund because it's a little easier for our sites to track the, the monies coming in and then the expenditure budgets. We always assume that the sites will fully spend the monies that are received as donations. That doesn't typically happen year to year because there's maybe they're accumulating money for certain projects. They're holding it for another calendar year or another fiscal year. Um, but right now, this fund is projecting eight hundred thousand dollars of revenues and one point three million dollars of expenditures. Food service fund, uh, we made a very minor change here. We adjusted down the expenditure budgets for food based on the trends that had been occurring year to date. Community ed, um, again, very minimal changes here. Uh, we adjusted some, uh, contracted services account, uh, for upcoming remodeling projects. We needed to add an expenditure. They're taking out of the fund balance to hire an architect and then do construction. In our debt service fund, uh, the change here was when we issued the debt, uh, for the alt facilities bonds earlier this year, there was extra money built in there, some capitalized interest that sits in the debt service fund and helps pay the first interest payment that's coming up since we didn't, uh, get a chance to levy for that ahead of time. Construction fund, again, this, the biggest change here is because we issued the debt to do the Churchill and Elton Hills projects. And so that adds in, uh, the, the bonded debt there as a revenue, and then we set up expenditure budgets to match, uh, and assume that, you know, we will spend the money on those projects. Work comp fund, uh, again, we really didn't make any changes here. Just note that, uh, five hundred thousand dollars of that expenditure budget will, is really just a transfer back to the general fund. There's excess dollars there. Um, that fund doesn't need one point five million dollars of fund balance. We're going to move it back to the general fund. Uh, dental fund, again, no significant changes in this fund compared to last quarter. And then in our health fund, we did, uh, adjust our contracted services line item, realized that we were overbudgeted, that this expenditure should not come in that high. So we took eight hundred thousand dollars out of the budget there, and reflecting ending with a fund balance of ten point five million. Paper Tiger, we didn't make any, uh, significant changes in this fund. And then in our O P E B fund, uh, we show that nine hundred thousand dollars come in as our revenue. So now we fully funded our O P E B liability as far as what is due according to our amortization schedule through the fifteen sixteen school year. So, um, we're right on track with where we need to be. That's the end of the presentation. I take any questions you may have on budget adjustments.
Board members?
The, uh, food service money, that's, uh, could you elaborate a little bit on how, how that's kind of stuck there, how?
Sure.
Three million dollars?
Yep. In the food service fund, a lot of that money is, uh, federal funds that come in to support, um, uh, free and reduced lunches. And that money needs to stay segregated in that fund. It's not the school district's prerogative to move that to a different fund because there's excess left over. And it's primarily because it's a, it was federal funds coming in. There is local money mixed in there, but the majority of it is federal.
Any other questions, comments? This is a brief, this isn't going to change. It's a briefing item.
I'll make a motion to move this to action.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Now an action item. I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent District, School District five thirty-five approve the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget adjustments through April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen as presented.
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point oh seven, this is approval of long-term facility maintenance revenue application. This is a briefing item.
Sean will also brief us on this.
And I actually didn't bring my computer and my notes. However, I think I've got the gist of it down for you. Basically, what I'm bringing forward to you is the ten-year facilities plan, and it's, it's a modification of the plan that you previously approved in April. I went to submit what you had previously approved to M D E, and I got, uh, rejected, said you didn't have the board approve it on our form. So I'm bringing it back on their form. We've made some tweaks because even in the, but time between April and June, there were some minor project changes, and we reshuffled some things around. But basically, the plan is about the same as what it was in April. So I'm just asking you, um, kindly to move this to action and to approve this for us.
On their form?
On their form.
Okay. Uh, any questions?
I have, I have a, it's somewhat trivial. The thing in board docs is School Division of Finance, Roseville, is that where it's getting healed to?
Yes, it goes to, uh, Roseville.
Thank you.
The M D E building.
Their, their form, their form wasn't all that clear.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate your clarification, John.
Any other questions? Is there a motion move this to action?
Some move.
Second.
Move this to action. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Now an action item. I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the amended long-term facility maintenance revenue application for fiscal year two thousand seventeen through fiscal year two thousand twenty-six for projects in the amount of one hundred and seventeen million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, with eighty-two million, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars funded on a pay-as-you-go basis, and twenty-six million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars funded through the issuance of past and future facilities maintenance bonds. Move approval.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any further discussion?
Can I just make one more comment?
You're gonna probably think we're nuts, but in July, we're gonna be bringing back the next version of this because they should have their new form for the fiscal years eighteen through twenty-seven or so. So I just get that out there on the table. You're gonna see this item come through again. You just, that's just avoid beating you up.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions, comments, whatever? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item seven point oh eight, authorization, authorization to purchase technology device replacing, replacement. This is a briefing item. Ms. Lewis?
Ms. Heather Nestler, Executive Director of Communications Marketing Technology, will brief us on this.
Good evening. I'm coming to you, um, to ask for your approval of, uh, desktop laptops and computer monitors for, um, the next three-year replacement cycle for our student computers. As you know, we, um, approved the plan, the technology plan, in August of two thousand fifteen. A portion of that plan called for the replacement of our desktop and laptop technology, which is about six years old. Um, and that being said, um, we go through a cycle every three years where we pull out our six-year-old devices, and then in exchange, we replace new devices with this funding, the lease levy funding. And then, um, the three-year-old devices that our students are using, some of those, a portion of those come out of the classroom and are rotated into staff devices. So that's our cycle where we pull out the six-year-olds, recycle them, um, and then utilize the three-year-old devices. So I'm bringing forward, um, this is our annual, or our three-year process. I'm bringing this forward in hopes that, um, we can move forward with the purchase of roughly fifteen hundred desktop computers, two hundred and forty-three laptop computers, fifty-one monitors, and then mounting brackets, um, from the now micro. We received two bids, and, uh, now micro was by far the, um, the cheaper bid, and they are based locally in St. Paul.
Questions? Ms. Heinz?
Uh, thank you very much for bringing those forward. And I, I know I probably raised the same question when we originally approved this. And I did warn, um, uh, Mr. Munoz that I would be asking this question, and I don't know if he's related or not. So I'll ask it. I'll be leaning on it. But I've always been very critical of our, uh, continued, uh, large-volume purchase of desktops and desktop monitors. And so I always want to sort of know where those are, what the primary uses. I understand these are going to replace old devices, but is there any process for us to determine, like, if that's really the best technology? Because, you know, I mean, we, we're sort of moving to more mobile technologies like laptops and tablets and so forth. And so, you know, I don't know. It just sounds like a lot, one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven. So can you tell me, sort of, is there a process for, and then what the primary use for these large pieces of machinery are?
Yep. And in our, in this case, we met with every single individual principal and, um, whoever they have dedicated as their technology expert on site. So our team, um, met with every site and said, here's the number of devices you have in your building that are six-year-old end-of-life. Um, parts are very difficult to source. Um, power supplies are failing. What would you like to do? And so some of them, um, so all of them had a hand in the game. Some of them said, I'd like to do more iPads. Some of them said, I'd like to do more mobile classrooms because of space, and I'd like laptops for that. Um, so they had their funding to work with, and then they worked with their site funding. Um, and then some of these desktop computers are actually the computers that you see in the classroom that run the interactive digital projectors. Those are things we can buy with, um, the student-funded, the lease levy dollars. So a portion of those are also replacing the computers you see in the classroom that use for digital protection. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neal?
A follow-up to that. Have you done a lease versus buy analysis that tells you buying them? No?
Yeah, we have, we have not. We've gone through this process. This is a portion, um, of our four point zero two million dollar lease levy. Um, I will say that when we, Superintendent Munoz and I had traveled to a conference, um, about a month ago, and I have asked for some options for leasing, the only challenge being that, um, this is all for student devices. So it's wrapping our arms around how we can fund staff devices. So yes, we're exploring it, but it's not something we're bringing forward here.
The expenditure is less of a concern to me that over time, six-year-old device feels like the operating system died a couple times.
Yes.
If we were buying them, can you use the lease levy to buy, purchase?
This is purchasing. Yep. This is purchasing.
My question was to check on leasing.
I'm missing it.
Sorry. Okay. Done. All right. Any other questions? Okay, this is a briefing item again, once again, is due.
Most of them move to action.
To actions or second?
Second.
Did I hear second?
I crawled it second.
Okay, yeah. I choked on it. Okay, there's a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor moving to actions, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Now an action item. I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby authorize the purchase of one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven desktop computers, two hundred and forty-three laptop computers, fifty-one monitors, and one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven desktop mounting brackets from now micro in the amount of one million, ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents to be funded through the lease levy funding source.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second approval. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Seven point oh nine.
Pursuant to Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point oh three subdivision one, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Hear second?
Second.
Been second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those favor, aye. We, all those favor signify aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll now go into closed session eight twenty-seven P M. Reconvene this meeting at nine oh three P M.
I move to amend the agenda to add the following item. Approval of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen Rochester Education. No, I have the wrong language.
Rochester Principal's.
Rochester Principals Association, sorry. Uh, approval of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen Rochester Principals Association Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second. Been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. It's now agenda item and is the agenda item. It's an action item, and I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District five thirty-five does hereby ratify the two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen collective bargaining agreement between Rochester Public Schools and the Rochester Principals Association employees. Is there, removed, second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion. I guess I just, in the way of discussion, comments, say thank you to, uh, all our parties on both sides for coming to the agreement, and we look forward to continuing our great working relationship. Uh, anybody else have anything they want to say? If not, I'll call a question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item eight point oh one, School Board Committee of Science. Any board members have any reports you'd like to give? Mr. Heinz?
Uh, I had the opportunity, uh, with several other board members to attend the, uh, wonderful equity conference up in the cities, uh, as well as, uh, the Assistant Superintendent and other, uh, cabinet members and members of the district. And it was, uh, it was a very, uh, good discussion about some of the issues, uh, that, uh, districts like ours are facing in regards to equity. The, you know, didn't come away with any, uh, solid answers. That's not a surprise. But the one thing that, uh, I think is comforting is this was a group that was very focused on, uh, continuing to work towards solutions and networking. Uh, so it was sort of a kickoff. It's not really a conference. It's sort of an unfair characterization. It was more of a convening and kickoff of. but it was more of a convening and kickoff of multiple partnerships and networks, and the conversations will sort of continue on it, and I was very optimistic. A lot of the things that we discussed were how other districts were handling things like their discipline policies, what they're doing to be inclusive, how we change mindsets within our district, we heard at the beginning of the meeting, some of the things that were also discussed, sort of how we are incorporating that to our own plans, and it's just great to know that, and one thing we always need to remember is the gist, that we're not in this alone, there's a lot of other brilliant minds here in Minnesota and beyond that are really trying to tackle this issue. I mean, to get into specifics, there was a lot of material coverage, I won't do that.
Thank you, thank you. Any other reports? Hearing none? With a motion to adjourn? Don't need one? I'm just gonna adjourn the meeting at 9:06 PM, thank you.